Twenty twenty three. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, can I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones please? Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for this meeting. As in all of our previous council meetings, any request to speak must be made by using your voting handset. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of committee services will assist you. I would like to extend a warm welcome to the members of the public attending the meeting. We are all very welcome to attend and observe proceedings, however, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting. Members, it is with great sadness that I have to announce the death of former County Councilor Sedgfield Borough and Sedgfield Borough Councilor and Alderman Bob Fleming, and former Durham City Councilor and Mayor of Durham Mildred Brown. Bob served on Durham County Council between nineteen ninety seven and two thousand and one, and on Sedgfield Borough Council from nineteen eighty seven to nineteen ninety one, and nineteen ninety five to two thousand and seven. Bob also served on Greater Aycliffe Town Council for thirty six years, and was awarded the Honour of Freeman of the Town in twenty fifteen. Mildred represented the Sherborne Ward on Durham City from nineteen eighty three to two thousand and three, and was Mayor of Durham in nineteen eighty eight to nineteen eighty nine. Can I ask you all to join me, to join with me in standing for a moment's silence? We move on to item one, to confirm the minutes, sorry, can I, to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the twenty first of June, can I have a mover and a seconder?
May I wish to move the minutes?
Second the minutes, Chair.
Thank you. Are the minutes agreed? Item two, does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the agenda? Thank you. We move on to item three. Members, can I ask that everyone is respectful to each other during the meeting? Robust debate is part of the democratic process, but I would ask members to respect the views of others and not to point fingers during debate. I would also remind members that it's not appropriate to shout at other councillors across the floor during debate. We have microphones which allow everyone to be heard, so please use them when speaking. Where points of order are raised, once a ruling has been made on advice of the head of Legal and Democratic Services, it will not be revisited. Since the last council meeting in June, I have attended various events. On the twenty seventh of June, I welcomed a visit by a, by, by French education visitors' delegation who carried out visits to our schools. On the twenty ninth of June, I welcomed a visit, I visited by Parkside Tubigan students to County Hall. On the thirtieth of June, I attended the Future Business Magnets Award, held at the Beamish Hall Hotel. This competition is designed to raise aspirations and develop enterprising skills in young people from across the county. On July the fifth, I attended Haswell Men Cap for the official opening of their sensory garden and patch to plate project. In addition to this, year-long celebrations have begun to mark seventy five years of an East Durham town. Durham County Council have received a grant of ninety two thousand three hundred and two pounds from the National Lottery Heritage Fund to carry out a programme events to commemorate seventy five years of Peter Lee being established as a new town. On Saturday the first of July, Peter Lee seventy five was launched at Castle Dean Shopping Centre, with Peter Lee the place to be, a unique photographic exhibition tracing the origins and early development of the town. Over the next year, the Peter Lee seventy five celebrations will continue with a series of events, exhibitions, concerts and workshops in and around the town, inviting people to reflect on Peter Lee's history and have a say on its future. The programme will involve the whole community from the centre of the town to surrounding areas, including the villages from which Peter Lee was founded. Additionally, this year marks the seventy fifth anniversary of Newton Aycliffe. Newton Aycliffe was designated as a new town in April nineteen forty seven, but the actual birth of the town was, has been widely regarded as being from nineteen forty eight. The key dates in relation to the birth of the town are the twenty eighth of June nineteen forty eight, which marked the cutting of the first sod, ahead of the construction of the first houses, and the ninth of November nineteen forty eight, which was then the keys were handed over to the first residents of the town. A number of events have already been held as part of the celebration. At this point, I just wanted to add a thank you to Councillor Alwyn Gunn and Councillor Fraser Tinsley. I was invited to a one hundredth birthday party, a hundred birthday event, and I was so pleased to go along, and I have to say, you have an amazing lady with, full of character, who received a card from the King, and it was a wonderful card, and the lady in question said to me, because I said to her, you've got a wonderful card, she said, yes, but there was no bloody money in it. And I have to say to Alwyn and to Fraser, thank you so much for inviting me and making me able to come along, thank you. We move on to item four, the Leader's Report. Can I invite the Leader of the Council to present her report?
Thank you, Chair. This is our last meeting before the summer recess, and while I'm sure we're all looking forward to a break, we also know that the next six weeks can be a difficult time for many families. Keeping children entertained can be a challenge at the best of times, and I wanted to remind you of the many events and activities taking place across the county to support families over the coming weeks. Our fun and food programmes offer free holiday activities with healthy food for children and young people. Sessions are hosted by schools and voluntary groups, as well as services from across the council. Children and young people aged eighteen and under can take advantage of free swimming sessions at all of our leisure centres throughout every school holiday, and there will also be a wide range of low-cost, family-friendly activities running throughout the summer at our various venues, from our libraries and parks to locations such as Kilip Lead Mining Museum. And finally, there will be lots of free family entertainment at Seum Food Festival, which takes place on Saturday the fifth and Sunday the sixth of August. With our stunning coastline as the backdrop, there's also the opportunity to enjoy the beach as well. I hope you are able to share this information with residents and advise them that details are available on our website. And with that, I wish you all a restful recess, thank you.
Do any members have any questions on the report? Councillor Marshall.
Thanks, Chair, thanks to the Leader of the Council for her report. Leisure centres and facilities provide a key role in activities and facilities for families around the county, and I wonder whether the Leader can explain or give us some reassurance around the redevelopment of the brand-new leisure facilities in Chesley Street and Seum, and at the Riverside in Chesley Street that were promised some years ago and we haven't seen any delivery on. Thanks, Chair.
Absolutely, Chair, there'll be a Cabinet report coming in the autumn, it was always part of Phase Two, which you are well aware of, because you were the Cabinet portfolio holder at the time, and if anyone from the opposition would like to attend Cabinet and ask questions, they're most welcome.
Can I ask the Council to note the report? We move on to item number five, questions from the public, there are no questions received for today's meeting. Item number six, petitions, there are no petitions received for today's meeting. We move on to item seven, report from the Cabinet, can I ask the Leader of the Council to present the report?
Chair, present the report as tabled, thank you.
Thank you, there are no questions that have been received in respect of the report, can I ask the Council to note the report? Thank you. We move to item eight, the Treasury Management Outturn Report, can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, good morning, members. This report provides an overview of our Treasury Management activity last year and the position to the thirty first of March twenty three for the council's borrowings and its investments, together with comparisons of the position at the previous year end. Consideration of this report meets the requirements of the Prudential Code, and the report includes details of our performance against the Treasury Management Policy and Strategy, and the support and prudential indicators agreed by County Council as part of the twenty two twenty three budget setting in February twenty two. Members will recall that a half-year position was considered by the council in December. There's a table at paragraph seventeen which provides a summary of the overall Treasury Management position for the council. Members will see that at the thirty first of March twenty three, we had total debt outstanding of four hundred and forty million, and a total cash investment of three hundred and fifty one million, meaning that our net debt position at the thirty first of March was therefore eighty nine million. Comparison figures at the thirty first of March twenty two are provided in the table, and members will see that our net debt position at the year end was around thirty million pound higher than at the beginning of the year, with our external borrowing at the year end being around twenty two million pound higher, and our cash investments held nine million pound higher, reflecting the receipt of, receipt of, and carrying over of significant grant funding that we received towards the end of the year, but also the capital receipts generated from the sale of the Sands Building in the year. The council's borrowing activity during the year is detailed in sections nineteen to twenty three. Last year, we took out new PWLB loans totaling fifty million pound, undertook some debt rescheduling to repay some high-interest loans totaling sixteen point four million, and there was a ten million pound PWLB maturity loan that was repaid in the year, with further principal repayments of just under two million pound on annuity loans. The average interest rate paid on our external debt at the year end is three point one one percent, which is naught point one four percentage points lower than the position held at the thirty first of March twenty two. In paragraphs twenty four and twenty five, there's an overview of our external debt and long-term liabilities. These include principle, these principally relate to PFI liabilities and finance leases, most notably vehicle leasing. An overview of our investment activity set out at sections twenty six to thirty two, and in the table at paragraph twenty seven, there's a breakdown of the institutions, the length of investments and the interest rates secured on those investments at the thirty first of March twenty three. All of our investments undertaken in the year, and those held at the thirty first of March, remain in line with our Treasury Management Strategy and associated policies, and at paragraph thirty three, I've outlined the changes to the Treasury Management Strategy for twenty three twenty four, where at council in February this year, members agreed to increase the counterparty limits for certain institutions. In line with the requirements of the Prudential Code, from paragraph thirty four onwards, the report sets out details of our performance against the various Treasury Management and prudential indicators, including details of our capital expenditure and the financing of our capital expenditure, and our capital financing requirement in twenty two twenty three. In summary, and I appreciate this as quite a technical report, the council remains in a very strong position in terms of its Treasury Management activity and position, and members can take comfort from the fact that the council has continued to fully comply with its Treasury Management Strategy and policies, and has and will continue to meet all the requirements of the Prudential Code. The recommendations are for council to note the report, thank you.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Chair. In moving that we note this report, I would like to thank the officers for the comprehensive update on our Treasury Management activity in twenty two twenty three, and for the information setting out our position as of thirty first of March this year. It's pleasing to note that the council has fully complied with all the requirements of the Treasury Management Policy and Strategy we agreed in February twenty two. Carefully managing our cash flows, external borrowing and investments, and maintaining compliance with the relevant codes of practice, in line with the prudential framework, is fundamental to delivering on our fiduciary responsibilities for public money. We normally receive this annual year-end report in September every year, but I know the team have been working really hard to prepare and publish our draft accounts and prepare all the associated year-end reports quicker than ever. Only thirty five percent of authorities nationally and twenty five percent of authorities in our region publish their accounts by thirty first of May, and I'm proud to say we were one of them, which is testament to the hard work of all of our officers maintaining the very high standards we have consistently achieved over many years now. Like me, I am sure the whole of the council appreciates their continued efforts, because getting timely financial information is key to good financial management. With that, Chair, I would like to move that the council notes the report.
Can we all agree? Thank you. We move on to item nine, the Youth Justice Plan. Martin Sventon, Deputy Corporate Director, Children and Young People, will present the report.
Better. Thank you, Chair, good morning, members, and good morning, visitors, particularly our young people who've joined us as well this morning. This report covers the Youth Justice Plan for the year ahead and highlights some of our service improvement priorities. Producing a Youth Justice Plan is a statutory requirement for us and is a condition of the grant we receive each year from the Youth Justice Board. In producing the plan, we followed detailed guidance from the Youth Justice Board, we submitted it to them by their end of June deadline, following approval by our own multi-agency Youth Justice Management Board. When we put this plan together, we were still waiting for confirmation of our grant from the Youth Justice Board, so I had to make a number of assumptions within the plan. And as of today, Durham, along with all other local authorities, are still waiting for confirmation of our grant allocation for this year, so may have to adjust the plan once we get the final allocation. Some of the key points about the work of the service are, first, in terms of our performance, this is measured against some nationally set measures, which we've noted at paragraph four, the latest available data. First-time entrance to the Youth Justice Service is measured by the rate per ten thousand of ten to seventeen-year-olds. The latest data shows our rate for County Durham is a hundred and forty six per ten thousand, which is a similar figure to that we reported last year. For re-offending, data shows a significant and welcome reduction in our re-offending rate over recent years, which is down from fifty two percent in twenty seventeen eighteen to thirty seven percent in the latest data. This does fluctuate a little bit each time we see the information, but continues to be a key area of focus for us. We continue to do a lot of work to try and work with victims of crime, both young people and adults. Over twenty two twenty three, we did restorative work with a hundred and twenty seven people, and at any one time, we've got around thirty five young people working with us, with our Young Victims of Crime Group, which they call themselves With Youth in Mind. Young people who have offended have also done nearly fifteen hundred hours of unpaid work in communities across the county as part of their reparation work. The service continues to prioritise its work with young people who are persistently offending. This includes an enhanced, intensive and trauma-informed model of working with this relatively small group of young people. Within our plan, we've tried to set out some clear service improvement priorities for the year ahead, which also link in with the findings from last year's inspection of the service. Our improvement priorities include the quality of assessments, plans and interventions with young people, targeting our efforts on the young people committing the most offences, and further developing our work with victims and developing more volunteering opportunities in the service. Through the work of the service, we also seek to ensure we hear the voices of children and their families. We've sought to include some brief examples of feedback from young people, parents and victims, as quotes throughout the plan, to try and indicate the impact and the breadth of the work that we do. As in previous years, we're down on the work programme for scrutiny later in the year, and we're pleased to have more detailed discussions with members at that time. So, turning to the recommendations, Chair, council is invited to note the contents of the report and receive the Youth Justice Plan for twenty three twenty four.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Henderson.
Thank, thank, thank you, Chair. It's, it's nice to know that, that we're doing some, something's right, and it's nice to see the, the report didn't need a lot of tweaks this, this year. I'd like to thank the, the officers and the staff for the work that has gone into producing this, 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 this plan. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Deenaly.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Martin, for a detailed report and for the continued work that the staff do to ensure that our young people have the support and interventions that they need to reach their, reach their potential. It is evident that a lot of work has gone into the Youth Justice Plan, and it has the welfare and wellbeing of our young people at its centre. It was encouraging to read that the plan is strengthened by partnership working, taken into consideration the views of young people and their parents, helping to identify the issues, issues common to preventing youth crime. Whilst it was disappointing to read that the Youth Justice Service received requires improvement in the HMI probation inspection, it is encouraging to hear that some areas received outstanding and good ratings for the work undertaken. I'm also pleased to read that the service is engaged with an increasing number of victims of youth crime in restorative approaches, and to see a decrease in the rate of re-offending. So I'd like to thank you once again for the time and commitment given to the young people within our county. Thanks.
There was no one else registered to speak. Can I ask the council to note and receive the report? Thank you. We move on to item ten, overview and scrutiny annual report. Can I ask councillor Rob Crute, Chair of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. What we have in front of us this morning is the Overview and Scrutiny Annual Report for twenty-two, twenty-three, which by its nature is largely retrospective. So with that in mind, I'm happy to pass over to the former Chair of the Management Board, Craig Martin, to speak to the report. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Crute. Chair, members, the report in your papers recaps the fantastic work we've done over the year. Thank you for officers that put it together, the chairs and vice-chairs for leading on this work, and all those involved in contributing to scrutiny, providing that critical friend to the executive. From my time as Chair of scrutiny, I just want to say a few thank yous for those that have been a massive help. Andy Palmer, Claire Lurie, Tom Gorman, Rosley Field, Stephen Guillam, Helen Lynch, Michael Turnbull, in particular councillor Chris Lyons as my Vice Chair, who was a fantastic sense check, being able to bounce ideas around, incredibly supportive person who pushed hard to deliver our agenda of overhauling the scrutiny process. It was an honour and privilege to serve with you. Thank you, and thank you to every single one of the ones that I've mentioned there. Chair, I just want to highlight some of my achievements and raise my biggest regret from this period. My big ambition for scrutiny is to have a bigger role in developing policy. My mantra to cabinet members is, if you're planning on doing something big, bring it to scrutiny first. Let's get members ahead of the policymaking process so they can set out what good policy looks like for their communities, provide an effective challenge so we get it right first time. Notable examples of this are the DLI and the Community Governance Review. Effort was put in to do more focused work on developing the council's budget, doing some deep dives into some particular areas and providing some specific recommendations that fed into the budget. I would have liked a bit more time to develop this and give it some proper teeth, because how do you put into action meaningful change in your community? It is through getting those additional resources, and the only way to do that is through the budget. It is king in delivering those things on the ground, empowering all members to have an even bigger say in it, would do so much more to empower the voices of those we represent. We did manage to get the full outturn to report to scrutiny. Always thought it was a bit of an oddity that we spent a lot of time discussing the approaching budget, but very little on how the council actually delivers that budget across the whole organisation. Members, you're not doing your job properly in scrutiny unless the executive are uncomfortable with the debates you're having. There's no doubt in my mind that the agendas I encouraged and facilitated did that, but I also didn't expect that opening up processes that'd also make the opposition uncomfortable as well. My biggest regret in scrutiny? Not having more opposition members as part of the leadership of scrutiny in my time. Although I'm proud to say I am the first Chair of scrutiny to actually have a Vice Chair from the opposition, but that is a criticism directed at both sides of the chamber, whether it was the opposition that were offered compromises but instead chose to go after every position, who themselves in their times in running the council have ruled over scrutiny with absolute control, or groups, but not all, just some, within the joint administration resisting opening scrutiny up even more, wanting most of the chairs and vice-chairs. Members, we should have political balance for these positions, but it is something that has fallen on deaf ears over the years by those who are more concerned with power as opposed to turning up the volume on effective democratic processes. And as a liberal, this scares me a lot, that so many of those involved in our democratic processes believe in leading through absolute control. As a liberal, I fight for pluralism, not totalitarianism. They want to empower everyone rather than the few at the top. I fight for scrutiny that leads to decision-making as opposed to policy development that follows from behind. I hope to be proven wrong in the future, and I wish all the luck to the new leadership of scrutiny. I think I played my part in making the system better. I suppose I got what I wanted in the end, I just had to lose my job to get it. Thank you, members.
Does any member wish to speak on the report? councillor Lyons.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Chris Lyons, Vice Chair of Corporate and Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. I'd just like to commend councillor Martin for his strong and fair leadership as Chair of scrutiny that allowed members from across the chamber to contribute fully to discussions, debate at every meeting, and it was a privilege to serve with you in that, in my role, and I wholly endorse his comments about political balance through scrutiny. I think that is the healthy and correct way forward. Thank you.
councillor Marshall.
Thanks, Chair. I mean, the first thing I want to say to Craig is I don't really miss your faces. I walk through the Durham room in the office where you're sitting every day. Sorry, I do miss your faces when I'm walking through the Durham room. You always brought a smile, and you always did take time for a chat. But I think, Chair, the point I want to make, that scrutiny isn't about one individual, it's a way that all of the non-cabinet members in this council get an opportunity to have their voices heard and to challenge and influence the decision-makers, and I just want to put on record my group's thanks to every member across the chamber who has contributed to the work of scrutiny, and thank Craig for the role he played as well. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Marshall. Can I ask the council to receive the report? We move on to item eleven, the annual report of the Standards Committee. I will present this report, sorry. I was reading the next bit and thinking, thank you, Chair, but then I'd be thanking myself. I am pleased to present the annual report for the Standards Committee for the period of twenty-two, twenty-three. The report sets out the membership of the committee for the period, which includes the two new parish and town council co-opted members who were appointed by council in March twenty-two, twenty-three. The report also refers to the interim appointment of Karen Milburn as independent person who provided invaluable support whilst we recruited new independent persons. I wrote to Mrs Milburn on behalf of the committee to thank her for her support to the committee and the monitoring officer during her short tenure. The recruitment exercise for independent persons was conducted during the last quarter of the period, and pleased to confirm that we started the new municipal year with three new independent persons, alongside Alan Fletcher, who was appointed in twenty-twenty-one. The committee's work programme, which is consistent with the terms of reference set out in the report at paragraph fourteen, is attached at appendix two to the report. The committee has continued to monitor standards and governance issues nationally. Council will recall that in December twenty-two, it agreed to sign up to the LGA's Debate Not Hate campaign. Since then, the committee has continued to receive regular updates in relation to the campaign and has supported the monitoring officer to provide case studies for the LGA on the support available to councillors who encounter abuse and intimidation. In respect of the complaints, members will see from the report that there was an increase in the number of complaints received during the year compared with twenty-one, twenty-two. The majority of complaints continue to relate to town and parish councils, however, there has been a slight increase in the number of complaints against county councillors. Whilst the number of complaints has increased, there was a decrease in the number of complaints where local resolution was recommended. An increase in the number of complaints where the outcome was no further action. There was no requirement to convene a Standards Committee hearing during the period. Looking ahead, the committee has agreed a work programme for the twenty-three, twenty-four. The work programme will continue to be a living document, which we can update to reflect any developments within the committee's remit through the year. The committee looks forward to welcoming the new independent persons to the meeting and the committee following their recent induction training. Finally, I would like to thank the monitoring officer and her team for the continued hard work with the committee in assisting to ensure that high standards are achieved by all locally-elected members. Can I ask the council to note the report? Item twelve, the annual report of corporate parenting. Can I ask Mamie Simmons, Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel, to present the report? Colleagues, I am also delighted to inform you that we have Billy Tasker and Luke Joseph, two young people who are co-opted onto the Corporate Parenting Panel here today, and they wish to speak to the report. They are supported by Rob Johnson, project worker for investing in children. Welcome to today's meeting. Mamie.
Good morning, everyone. I am councillor Mamie Simmons, elected member for the Frommogat Mua and Newton Hall Division and Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel. I'm here today to present the Corporate Parenting Panel annual report for endorsement. Firstly, I would like to thank officers from the Corporate Parenting Panel, along with all the young people who made the annual report possible. The annual report covers the period from April twenty-two to March twenty-three. I won't go through the annual report, but think you will all agree that there is a wide range of work taking place across the service to support the young people in our care as well as our care leavers. I would like to allude to some of the achievements we are particularly proud of, including our focus on personalised care, ensuring each young person has an individual care plan, detailing how they need to be looked after to help them get the best from their lives. The awareness-raising work with staff in our children's homes and with foster carers to remind them how young people like to be treated. Young people are now on the interview panels for all foster carers and children's home staff to ensure they help appoint the best possible people to the jobs. The updates that have been made to family time rooms to help young people have the best possible experiences with their family members in more natural surroundings. Also, development of the Care Leaver Scrutiny Committee and the Care Experienced Young Inspectors Programme to help us explore how our services are received by young people. Our commitment to continue to support young people with their transport arrangements. Also, the implementation of the Mockingbird Foster Care Model, which helps support foster families in a way similar to other family networks. The Ofsted inspection results earlier in the year were certainly an achievement, with us being graded as good overall, with the impact of leaders on social work practice being outstanding. In addition, Ofsted noted our corporate parenting strategy as ambitious. Work is continuing to address the twenty-two, twenty-four priorities identified in the annual report, which include savings and life skills, and I look forward to providing a progress update in the next annual report. Throughout the year, we meet with young people from the Children in Care Council, who hold us to account on the progress we are making against our priorities, and rightly so. I am extremely proud of the work of the Corporate Parenting Panel and the commitment within the service to ensure the best possible experiences and outcomes for the young people who are in our care. I present the Corporate Parenting Panel annual report twenty-two, twenty-three for endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mamie. Billy, can I ask you to address the council?
I just want to preference this by saying it's completely surreal to be here. If I was to tell fourteen-year-old me that I'd be standing here today, she probably would have fainted. Hi, hello, and I'm Billy. I'm represented from the Children Care Council. For Durham to have young people attend meetings of the Corporate Parent Panel shows us as they're young people how forward-thinking Durham is, as not all regions have this provision in place, and it's an opportunity that I greatly appreciate. Anyway, I'm confident you've read or have heard the accomplishments of the Corporate Parent Panel, so I'm not going to regurgitate anything that's been said. However, I would like to refer to my statement that I've published in the report. Specifically where I mentioned the panel encouraged me to present my ideas and points and feelings in an unorthodox manner, what I really mean by this is they like us to present in a way that we feel comfortable, and so I thought that I'd bring a little taste of that here. I know these are really professional meetings, but I thought that you'd appreciate some spoken-word poetry, so I've prepared something specifically for today. It's about my work with the council and how I feel about it and how I feel about having my voice heard. It's called Megaphone, I really hope you like it. When I used to speak, it was hard to be heard. My voice would get lost like a flightless bird. It started with a whisper, a tiny sound, a seed planted in fertile ground. You nurtured it with love and care, and soon enough, it began to flare. But when I found my megaphone, my voice took flight, soaring above the noise, clear and bright. With each word, I feel more alive. My voice grew strong. Finally, I can thrive. My voice grew stronger in each passing day, and soon enough, it's here to stay. I can speak my truth with confidence and pride. My voice is my power, my beacon, my guide. Now I've found my voice, I'll never let it go. It's part of me, like a river is to its flow. I feel heard, and that's an important thing. It's like my soul has sprouted wings. But sometimes, not everyone finds their voice to speak their truth and make a choice. But when we help others make a sound, their voice will echo all around. It starts by listening with an orbiting ear to understand what they hold dear, their passions, their dreams, their fears, and what they want to share with their peers. We can hold their megaphone so their message is loud and known. We can amplify their voice with care so everyone around can stop and stare. When we help others find their voice, we give them wings so they can rejoice. Their message can take flight and soar, and they can be heard forevermore. Thank you.
That was, as always, brilliant from Billy. She did it in Manchester like she's been doing it for fifty, sixty years. It's unbelievable. I swear she must have been a professional poet in her past life. Thank you all for having me again. I was here last year, and it's been amazing over the last year to work as part of the Corporate Parent Panel and representing the Children Care Council. I want to thank everyone for their hard work that they've put in over the last year, and I think the annual report reflects all of our efforts and the success we are seeing from our hard work. From the support for unaccompanied asylum seekers, which has been amazing, to the support around our entry-to-care packs, which are now called supply packs, which has been incredible. It shows how much of a It shows how much of a council you listen to young people and take their ideas on board and benefit a life for a young person. It was just an idea that I took at Children Care Council last year, and it's took flight and it's seen so much progress, from developing a pack itself, getting more than enough funding from the council, and then being able to make a video and present my idea to Manchester in front of many directors. It's just been incredible to see that a little idea that I made is making such a difference. And I know if I was a young person and I got a supply pack, I would have had a much better start to my care journey, and that makes me truly happy. The CPP helps to promote that we are more than children care, and we are young people with a range of skills, abilities, and talents. To support this, our service leads shared proud moments, which I always love to hear. And at each CPP meeting, it showcases some of their achievements, no matter how big or small. As I am part of the advisory board, and I get the great opportunity to go down to London to speak with the council of children care, I always like to promote the Durham and the work they do, as it's a lot different to the other councils, and they don't include young people in their work as much as we do. And we truly appreciate this. I want to say a final thank you to all of you, and don't stop being brilliant, and we can improve the service one step at a time. Thank you.
To Billy and Luke, can I just say, well done? You definitely showed us how to do it this morning. Your voice is so important to the whole of County Durham and to everyone who comes into the system. And keep on speaking and keep on telling us. I have councillor Deenaly, who would like to speak.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you, Billy, for a wonderful poem. It highlights the importance of listening to young people. And thank you, Luke. It's great to see you here again this year. I would like to thank officers and staff for a thorough report, and thank all staff who worked with and helped to ensure the safety and wellbeing of children in care in County Durham. It is great to see that there's a focus and the priorities are based around what our children want and need and what they are telling us. And it's also great to see their achievements within the report, whilst also providing an in-depth report on performance of our services. I welcome the annual report and thank staff for their continued work and commitment.
Thank you. Councillor Gunn?
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't going to speak, but having listened to the two young people this morning, I will first of all say thank you for the annual report. It's a really good report, and it also exemplifies and focuses very much upon all of the work that's been developed over many years in terms of corporate parenting. But without the Children in Care Council, I'm absolutely convinced that that development would have been much slower and possibly some of it non-existent because their influence and their ideas have just been so valuable and quite crucial. Because if you haven't been there, you cannot understand what it means, what the needs are. And can I just say about your poetry? As someone who loves poetry, it's absolutely staggering. And really, I hope you will go on to develop that talent and skill you have. Take that forward, and I hope we can do something actually with your poem to make it go wider afield, Chair, to make other people see and listen. Two very confident young people you are, and I thank you for your contribution this morning. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Hobgood?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Like councillor Gunn, I wasn't prepared to speak this morning, but I think you two have inspired us as members as to what can be achieved. And you said at 14, you would have wondered whether you could stand here and do this. I suspect a lot of us in this chamber were a lot older before we even thought, could we stand up here and say anything? And there's probably some people in here today still wonder whether they could stand up and say anything. So I'd like to thank you sincerely, but I'd also like to say a big thank you for the leadership on corporate parenting of councillor Simmons and councillor Walton, as well as all of the members on corporate parenting and Children in Care Council and the young people, because it is a joint effort, and it is all of the combination of all those people who make it the success that it is. So thank you for coming today, and thank you for everything you do for the people and young people in County Durham.
Thank you, councillor. Can I ask the council to endorse the report? Thank you. We move on to item 13, Local Government Boundary Commission Review. Can I ask the head of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. This report's the latest update in relation to the Local Government Boundary Commission Review, which has been considering the total number of councillors to be elected to the council, the boundaries of future electoral divisions, the number of councillors representing each division, and the name of those divisions. The progression of the review to date is set out at paragraphs 14 to 25 of the report. And since the last report to council in January 2023, the Local Government Boundary Commission for England has published draft recommendations for new patterns of electoral divisions, division names, and the electorate. The draft recommendations are for nine single councillor divisions, 28 two-councillor divisions, and 11 three-councillor divisions. The Boundary Commission considered that the draft recommendations, which are attached in fuller Appendix 2, provide for good electoral equality whilst reflecting community identities and the interests based on evidence received as part of their consultation. The proposals were subject to a final round of consultation between the 2nd of May and the 10th of July. The Electoral Review Member Working Group met on the 27th of June to consider the proposals. The group considered that it was unlikely that a single council response would be agreed, and therefore it was agreed that each political group and/or individual councillors would respond to the consultation by the 10th of July 2023. With the consultation having now closed, it's for the Boundary Commission to review all of the responses received. They are expected to publish their final recommendations in November 2023, with the changes to take effect in time for the May elections in 2025. Chair, the recommendation is at paragraph seven to note the report.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to note the report? We move on to item 14. Call-in of the executive decision made on the 14th of June 2023, Home-to-School Transport Services Consultation Outcomes. Can I ask the head of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report and explain the procedure and the rules of debate? And can I...
Thank you, Chair. On the 14th of June 2023, the Cabinet considered a report on Home-to-School Transport Services Consultation Outcomes. Details of the decision taken by Cabinet are set out at paragraph 11 of the report, and the Corporate Director for Children's and Young People Services will be asked to give background and context to those decisions in a moment. The Cabinet report is appended at Appendix 2. On the 16th of June 2023, a call-in request was received, and a copy of that is attached at Appendix 3. The Chair of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board considered the request reasonable, and accordingly, the board met on the 28th of June and considered the report, having heard from relevant portfolio holders and the Corporate Director. Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board resolved that the decision be referred to full council for consideration on the grounds set out at paragraph 16 to the report, which brings us here today. The covering report sets out the options available to council today at paragraphs 18 to 20. But in summary, if, having considered the Cabinet decision, the reasons for calling and the grounds for referral to council, council does not object to the decision, then no further action is necessary, and the decisions taken by Cabinet will take effect today. If, however, council objects to the decision, then council cannot seek to overturn change or replace the decision. The decision taken by Cabinet is not contrary to the budget or policy framework, and therefore the only option available to council is to refer it back to Cabinet for reconsideration. In that case, a meeting of the Cabinet must be convened within 10 working days of today's meeting, and at that point Cabinet would be asked to consider whether to amend the decision in light of representations made today, or at that point whether the decision will remain unchanged. Whatever Cabinet decides at that point, that will be final, and they cannot be subject to further calling. In terms of the procedure as to how matters will run as part of the debate, as the Chair's indicated and I've indicated, the Corporate Director will be asked to give some background and context to the decisions taken by Cabinet in June. At that point, the Chair will invite members to ask any questions that they have of the Corporate Director in relation to the background and context and the decisions. And then the Chair will bring in councillor Crute as Chair of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, who will open the debate for council. And it's at that point, once that debate's been opened, moved, and seconded, members will be invited to make speeches. I usually explain the rules of debate on motions on notice, but because this is likely to be subject to debate, I will cover them at this point. So it is the usual rules of debate. Movers of motions have five minutes to speak. Seconders and other speakers will have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion, other than the mover, who has a three-minute right of reply. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate is on that amendment. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at any one time. No further amendments may be moved until the amendment under discussion has been disposed of. Each member can speak once on the amendment, except for the mover of the original motion. They have a right of reply, but may not otherwise speak on it. If, following the vote, an amendment is carried, it becomes a substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate goes back to the original motion. And just to note that any amendments will need to be provided in writing so that they can be shared with members, so it's clear what's being debated. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I now invite the Corporate Director of Children and Young People Services to explain the background and context to the decision taken by the Cabinet on the 16th of June 2023?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. So a proposal was agreed by Cabinet in February this year to undertake a consultation on options to improve our current home-to-school transport arrangements and to address issues of sustainability. An internal review, supported by external expert advice and benchmarking with similar councils, developed the recommendations for consultation. Following the consultation, a report was submitted to Cabinet in June with a range of proposals, which was agreed to establish a programme of work to reform our home-to-school transport provision. The programme of work set out in the June Cabinet report tried to achieve three things. It was looking at the equity of approach and removal of legacy issues that created inequity of provision. It was looking at the sustainability of home-to-school transport, given the huge cost pressures. And it was looking at enabling children and young people, particularly those with special educational needs and disabilities, to develop their independence. All children eligible to receive free transport due to family income, distance from school, or their special educational needs will continue to be provided with free transport. That will not change. The proposals were focused on areas of discretionary provision and how we provide transport to those eligible in the most efficient and appropriate way. The current model is financially unsustainable. Costs have increased from £14.4 million per year in 1920 to £29.1 million per year in 2324, an increase of more than 100%. Cost pressures of home-to-school transport are substantial across all areas nationally, and the County Council's network have produced two detailed reports highlighting their concerns and the issues in terms of sustainability, which have been submitted to government. Both of those reports are available and are public documents. Durham still retains some discretionary areas of provision for a limited numbers of schools, such as the maintained concessionary scheme, which operates across just nine schools, and I will come on to that in some more detail. The consultation ran for six weeks in spring, and we went well beyond the statutory guidance for consultation on home-to-school transport, which sets out how we must consult in relation to any proposed changes. All schools were engaged, as were relevant groups of parents and children, young people, including those with special educational needs and disabilities. We received a total of 324 responses to the online survey, and also took written responses from a range of meetings that were held with particular groups. Children's Overview and Scrutiny considered the proposals in March, and they provided a written response to the consultation, which was considered as part of the outcome. If further work identifies any specific consultations for affected groups that may come as a result of the work that's taken forward, this will come back through the appropriate governance mechanism at that time. A detailed analysis of the responses and the full written responses and submissions were included in the Cabinet report in June, and a detailed breakdown of those, as well as the copies of the full submissions were included. Prior to the call-in of the report following the June Cabinet meeting, there were a number of opportunities for members to raise concerns about the proposals. Firstly, Cabinet on the 8th of March, when the consultation was launched; consultation with Children's Overview and Scrutiny in March, where a written response was provided; and the Cabinet full report on the 14th of June. Members were also free to submit any concerns or queries through the consultation period when it was open. The request from Overview and Scrutiny to council outlined five areas of concern for further detail and for further consideration, and I'll briefly go through those. The first of those was a review of procurement of home-to-school transport provision to be undertaken. This is a core part of the home-to-school transport programme and was covered in detail through both the consultation and the report to Cabinet, both the reports to Cabinet in February and to June. The procurement work stream is currently undertaking a review of existing business processes and arrangements for procuring the service, learning from other councils and best practice from around the country. They're taking on board the suggestions that came through the consultation, and there were a number of very helpful suggestions that came through the consultation process, and also looking at reviewing and trying alternative procurement options. Procurement in recent years has been affected by significant market challenges, including high inflation, workforce issues, particularly a lack of drivers, and national changes to the accessibility guidance. Procurement forms a core part of our work to ensure sustainability, but it can only be one element. The second area highlighted was a review of the sustainability of home-to-school transport services in the medium to long term to be undertaken. This is a fundamental reason why the review of home-to-school transport was instigated. High levels of expenditure on home-to-school transport, as I've stated, are a national issue and experienced by all local authorities. Without changes to existing national legislation, criteria, and entitlements, demand for home-to-school transport is likely to continue to grow. This is particularly the case for children with special educational needs and disabilities. There's been a 79% increase in numbers of children with education, health, and care plans since 2019 in Durham, and on average, around 45% of those with education, health, and care plans need specialist transport. Durham is an outlier in terms of providing discretionary services, and also has a higher level of door-to-door services for children with special educational needs and disabilities. Many councils have already implemented many of the changes that are proposed within the Cabinet report, and we are looking at those areas where we are out of line with provision around the rest of the country. Without action, council will continue to need to meet the shortfall in the budget annually, and that questions the sustainability moving forward. The third area was around the proposed increase in the charge for standard and maintained concessionary scheme to £2, and how that will place additional pressures on families facing severe financial pressures under the cost of living crisis. So firstly, on this, the concessionary scheme is used by parents of all income levels. It is not means-tested, and those meeting the low-income threshold will continue to get free transport. The concessionary scheme is a scheme which is used by very few schools, just nine across the county, and was not put in place to support disadvantaged areas or parents with low incomes, but is a historical legacy. The scheme is inequitable. Only a small number of pupils, 452, benefit at a reduced cost funded by the council. We have around 70,000 children of school age at more than 250 schools who do not benefit from that subsidy currently. The council has taken into account feedback from the consultation and has reduced the proposed charge from £2.80, which was consulted on, to £2 per day. That proposed charge of £2 aligns with the rate set in the Bus Service Improvement Plan Fair and is a commercial rate that all children using the public service network will pay from September. The fourth area was the proposals that adversely impact on the more disadvantaged area of the county, especially rural areas with public transport services being reduced or in some cases removed. So all children who are eligible will continue to receive home-to-school transport, regardless of income or nationality, due to the distance criteria... Due to the distance criteria set out in the statutory guidance, those in rural areas are far more likely to be eligible for free transport. Any child whose nearest school at primary level is more than two miles from home, or at secondary level more than three miles from home, will be in receipt of free transport. A full equality impact assessment was completed and attached to the Cabinet report. Its headline founders were also included in the body of the report. The EIA concluded that the recommendations agreed by Cabinet are unlikely to disproportionately impact on the most disadvantaged areas of the county. And the fifth area was the impact of the proposals on those children with complex and special educational needs and disabilities, and they should be fully examined and identified. External review highlighted that Durham has a higher percentage of children in receipt of single-person transport and passenger assistance than comparable councils. In the consultation, the proposal to review these arrangements was supported by more than seventy percent of parents of young people with additional needs. The Council is not moving away from single-person travel where it's required; however, the type of transport allocated will be based on a child's needs. The review has a positive focus on developing independence, and that will be done in conjunction with parents and schools. In councils with good schemes such as personal travel budgets, many parents have chosen these as their preferred option. It is an opt-in, and parents will not and cannot be forced to take up personal travel budgets. Pickup points are proposed to be trialled with schools and parents of children with special educational needs and disabilities to look at how we can best use them. Arrangements around safety, location of pickup points and children's needs and abilities will be considered and agreed, and will only be tested with parental consent. Many councils already operate these types of schemes successfully to support a child to develop their independence, confidence and socialisation. Our current model risks building levels of dependence that will be detrimental to children as they grow older. Young people regularly tell us how important facilitating their independence is in this context. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Before we move into the debate, do any members wish to ask the Corporate Director of Children and Young People's Services any questions in relation to the proposals? These should be questions only, and not speeches. There are no questions. Can I say thank you for the report? Can I now invite councillor Crute, Chair of Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, to speak?
Thank you, Chair. As Helen's already made clear, the decision made by the Cabinet at its meeting held on the fourteenth of June with respect to its home-to-school transport policy was referred to the Management Board, in line with the Constitution and the Council's procedure on calling. At the subsequent Management Board meeting held on the twenty-eighth of June, a number of comments were made about the Cabinet decision, but specifically in relation to the proposed increase in concessionary travel fares. Some members at that meeting defended the Cabinet's decision, but many others expressed grave concerns about the impact it would have on some households already struggling against the ongoing cost of living crisis, record levels of council tax, combined with rising monthly mortgage costs caused by prolonged period of persistently high interest rates. Following a vote at the Management Board chair, a decision was reached to refer this matter to full counsel for deliberation, and that's where we are today. So in accordance with the Council procedure rules, and in order for a debate to take place, there needs to be a motion, which has been moved and seconded. So to facilitate debate on this matter, I formally move that this council requests Cabinet to reconsider its decision made on the fourteenth of June in relation to home-to-school transport on the ground set out in paragraph sixteen of the report in front of us this morning, Chair. I'm happy to leave it there, because I think it's more important. We hear you what members have to say about the policy and the implications of the policy on the people we all represent. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, councillor Crute. The motion will require a second. Councillor Deanaly.
Thanks, Chair. Although only nine schools are impacted by the uplift to two pound, many residents in communities surrounding the schools will be impacted. County Durham has some of the most disadvantaged areas in the UK, and while some families are eligible for free transport, there are those that are on the breadline, low-income, working-family households, where they are not eligible for benefits and not eligible for free transport. These are the families that are going to be impacted most. It isn't just the uplift that raises concerns. The recommendations to move away from single-person transport to collective hubs and the move to personal budgets also worries me. The extra stress and pressure on families can have an immense impact, causing distress and unnecessary disruption. I feel the decisions made by the Cabinet have not been fully thought through with regards to the level of impact on the families in County Durham, and this is why I second the motion.
Does any member wish to speak on the motion? Councillor Chris Lines.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Chris Lines from Sedgfield Division and Vice Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. I am somewhat perplexed over why we are actually debating this topic in the chamber today. As a diligent councillor, I have followed the review of home-to-school transport as it has progressed. I have had plenty of chances to contribute to that, through the consultation, through the Children and Young People's Overview and Scrutiny Committee, and of course, twice at Cabinet. Like every councillor, I could have asked questions of Cabinet that may have clarified points or even influenced the final decision. I didn't do that. But then, of course, neither did anyone else. Then a call-in request letter was submitted that not only contained a glaring inaccuracy about the uplift, but also failed to outline in any way how the decision did not adhere to the principles of decision-making set out in Article ten of the Council's Constitution. Despite this, I welcomed the opportunity for the subject to be discussed at Management Board. I listened to the presentations and explanations given by Mr Pearce and members of the Cabinet. I heard the many good questions that were put to them by councillors and the well-considered and thorough responses from that debate. It became even clearer to me that the decision about home-to-school transport, while not taken at all lightly, was made in the correct way and following all due process. Indeed, it had been significantly modified following feedback from the thorough consultation. The Cabinet's decision was neither contrary to the Council's policy framework, nor contrary to or not wholly consistent with the Council's budget, as was pointed out at Management Board. Therefore, following that good discussion in Management Board, this particular call-in should have gone no further, certainly not to full counsel, which now has no locus to change the decision anyway. And yet, here we are, participating in another act of political theatre, rather than getting on with other vital and urgent work. Don't misunderstand me. Home-to-school transport is also a vital topic, but all of us have had ample time and opportunity to constructively contribute to that review, long before this meeting. I would commend those who did attend Cabinet and do so, but there is no one to praise. I urge colleagues to vote against this motion.
Thank you, councillor Olwengun.
I sincerely hope that what councillor Lines was saying, I think he was saying that he really thinks it's okay to debate this this morning, but it seemed to be rather convoluted in the explanation. I think it's absolutely fine to debate this this morning. Why shouldn't we? It's another opportunity to do so, and we all know that if we go to Cabinet, that we're very restricted in what we can ask, if you like, but most of all, in the answers that we will be given. The opportunities are there, but they're restricted opportunities. I just want to say that school cuts, Chair, will cause more distress and anxieties to young people and their families. Free and easily accessible school transport is an absolute lifeline for many of our young people and families. Now, we know that there are significant pressures on mainstream home-to-school transport and special education needs disability school transport, and we know that the support isn't there from government. We know that, and it should be, but it isn't. So targeted support is required. It is required from government, but we also know that with the significant financial pressures on this council, there is a need to address financial priorities. And clearly for me, with the recommendations that have come from this Cabinet on home-to-school transport, it is clear that for this coalition Cabinet, home-to-school transport is not a priority. And frankly, the timing of this Cabinet decision could not be worse. Families are in financial crisis, and they're suffering anxiety. They're awake at night, worrying about how to feed their children, how to pay the rent, how to pay the mortgage, and how to keep a job. And now what this coalition has done, this Cabinet has done with these decisions, is add to that worry about how to get their children to school and whether they will be safe and secure and have a journey which will allow them to be stress-free and confident enough to learn. And, Chair, if there's anyone here in this room who has any doubts about how critical education is for young people, then, you know, we might as well not be here discussing this. If you can't get to school and you can't arrive at school without being anxious and upset, then your learning is significantly inhibited, and I know that as a teacher. Your decisions, Cabinet, will have a serious impact upon children and families. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Lesley Maven.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Lesley Maven, representing the Belmont Division and a member of the Children and Young People's Overview and Scrutiny Committee. As John Pearce said, the current model for home-school transport is financially unsustainable, with increased costs from fourteen million in two thousand nineteen twenty to twenty-nine million in twenty twenty-three twenty-four, more than a hundred percent increase. Increasing demand has put additional strain on available resources. With growing populations and changing demographics, more students now require transport assistance, leading to higher costs for the council, including the need for additional vehicles and drivers. Furthermore, the County Council's networks' reports have highlighted concerns regarding sustainability in home-to-school transport. One aspect of sustainability is environmental impact. The reliance on fossil fuels for transportation contributes to carbon emissions and air pollution, which have detrimental effects on both public health and the environment. The request from Overview and Scrutiny Committee for council debate highlighted five areas, with the first being a detailed review of the procurement of home-to-school transport provision should be undertaken to establish the potential to reduce budget costs before any changes to the existing scheme are made. This was included in the external review of home-to-school transport, and a range of procurement options were put forward. A home-to-school transport board was set up in twenty twenty-one and is supported by a procurement work stream. Procurement in recent years has been affected by market challenges, including high inflation, workforce, a lack of drivers, and national changes to accessibility guidance. Within the work programmes proposed by the MTFP savings, procurement plays an essential role. However, it is crucial that we also give attention to discretionary and inequitable provision and address the significant demand for costly send transport, which often serves as an obstacle to children's personal development. As a former head of a special school, I fully support any initiatives that could help support young people with their independence. There is no requirement for this report to be sent back to Cabinet, because in my view, a fully costed and scrutinised proposal has already been agreed. Therefore, I urge all members to cast their vote against this calling. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Christine Fletcher, from the Belmont Division. I've been asked to speak to council today by the Young People of Belmont School. The Belmont Student Council Democratic Group has come to the conclusion that the walking route from Sherburne to the Belmont Community School Building through Rennie's Lane to Burke Dale Gardens is unsafe and not suitable for children aged eleven to sixteen. The walking route which is offered to students living in Sherburne Village has multiple issues: a lack of street lighting, high crime rate in the stretch of land known as the scrambles, and is unsafe in nature. As an alternative route to the one provided, students have to walk down the B twelve eighty-three and through Durham City Retail Park. Students shouldn't be expected to walk this route because of a lack of path next to the road and the dangerous speed limit of the road. Teachers and parents have commented that they wouldn't be comfortable with students as young as eleven walking this route, and it leaves families in the local area have to pay three hundred pound per student per year for a bus pass, a sum which many families cannot afford at this time. Either this or having to drive children to school, which has various complications. Low-income families may not be able to afford a bus pass. Many parents or carers are unable to drive. Our parents and carers may work unsociable hours and do not have the schedule to drive their children. Currently, the school community has concluded that the walking route that they have to take, because they live just within the three-mile limit of being able to get school transport, the route is unsafe for them to walk. And to really understand the route's complication, they would like councillors to come and walk the route from Sherburne to the school, so they really would know the danger that countless students are placed in daily and walking in the route in snow, sleet, rain, the dark, and/or with an abundance of traffic. They have asked that the council reconsider the report. Thank you. I support the motion.
Councillor Louise Fennick.
I'm struggling to see the benefits of getting send children to collected hubs and share transport into schools when they would normally get picked up from the door. Children and their families in this county are going to be hugely impacted by the proposed changes to home-to-school travel. In particular, send children who deal with all sorts of daily challenges, from physical impairment to breathing impairments like cystic fibrosis. How difficult is it going to be for a child with breathing difficulties? And the parent of that child, after the morning routine of physio and perhaps getting other children in the household ready for school, to then trek off to the collection hub in all weathers, it's cruel and it's just not practical. Parents with neurodivergent children are challenged every day with behaviours and have them pulling their hair out. The thought of manoeuvring a child with set routines to a hub away from home to get collected with other children with complex needs is a potential nightmare and just not necessary. The predicted saving this will bring to the county is nowhere near the added stress and misery it's going to bring on hundreds of families. Please don't call it supporting independence for send children when it is going to have the opposite effect. The briefing note states that Durham, sorry, the briefing note states that in Durham, we go above and beyond our statutory duty by providing subsidised home-to-school transport. Please, let's keep going above and beyond for our children.
Councillor Elizabeth Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to mention something that's already been alluded to by councillor Lines, and it is the gross inaccuracy that was contained in the original calling, where it was stated that there was to be a two-pound uplift to fares. This simply isn't true. It's a thirty-seven p uplift to two pounds, and I think that really needs to be a matter of record. This was further perpetuated in a film put out by some Labour members, in which councillor Miller stated that there was to be a two-pound increase per journey, which is wildly inaccurate, can only be considered to be scaremongering and frightening the vulnerable families that we indeed are trying to protect through these measures. So I would ask, please, that members, if they do intend to call in any Cabinet decisions in future, that they do so with accuracy and honesty, because it's not helpful to the democratic process to not be honest. because it's not helpful to the democratic process to not be honest.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Patricia Joplin?
All right, that'll be fine. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Councillor Patricia Joplin, Crook Ward, and member of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board. The request from the OS for council debate highlighted five areas of concern. One of them stated that there needs to be a full review of the sustainability of home and school transport service budget in the medium and long term. This is a national issue of high level of expenditure for all authorities across the North East are all struggling with this problem. The national issue... There are currently three hundred and seventy pupils travelling in a taxi on their own and there are five hundred and forty-four passengers assisted, allocated to transport journeys. For every young person travelling in this way...
Chair, I'd like to raise a point of order. Chair, I'm just not very comfortable about this. I mean, I myself am quite unwell and I've turned up to this meeting and I've literally just been sent an email from another councillor with one of my colleagues's face on it. And I just don't think that's appropriate during a debate on something that's so important. I don't think it's appropriate at any stage. So I'm going to sit down now and shut up. But I'm not happy about this behaviour.
Councillors. This is a chamber to debate. It is not a chamber to be sending things across. We need to be concentrating on what we are debating.
Chair. Chair, could I raise a similar issue, please, just very briefly? Chair?
Let me just explain. For anyone who doesn't know, I will decide what happens in this chamber. No one needs to tell me. I know the rules. I've read the rules.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for stating that. I'm just, I just want to reiterate what's been said. It's not just about the sending of emails. It's about the content of the email as well while we're sitting in this chamber. And I find it quite appalling that we, that our concentration, which should be, and I'm sorry that you've been interrupted and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Chair, but which our concentration should be on what we're discussing, serious discussion. And a member of the cabinet believes that it's fine to send an email with a photograph of one of our group and information, which I don't understand actually. Sorry, Chair, but I find this appalling. Thank you for your statement.
Can I just apologise to Patricia for stopping her in mid-stream? Would you like to continue, Patricia?
That's fine. Right. There are currently three hundred and seventy pupils travelling in a taxi on their own and there are five hundred and forty-four passenger-assisted allocated to transport journeys. Every young person travelling in this way costs an average of twenty thousand pounds a year. Travelling in groups can have numerous benefits for children. Social and emotional development firstly. It provides them with opportunities to interact and engage with their peers, fostering the development of important social skills by travelling together. Children learn how to communicate effectively, negotiate conflict and work collaboratively as a team. These experiences help them build strong friendships and develop a sense of belonging within their peer group. This call-in is nothing more than a political grandstanding when, when due diligence and the opportunity for scrutiny by the opposition has been and passed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. At this point, I'd like to bring Helen Lynch in just to explain what...
Thank you, Chair. So the two points of orders that have been raised have been addressed by the chair and she's made it clear that the focus is on the debate. If there are concerns about an email that has been sent, then the correct process for raising those concerns is via a code of conduct complaint and it will go through the standards process following the meeting.
Thank you. We move on to councillor Fraser Tinsley?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think we need to bring this decision back to Cabinet because that's all we can effectively do today for a reason that... It appears to me that there may be some misunderstanding as to the true implications of this decision. Because what we discuss today is the financial implications in many ways for the council. But I think the real concerns are for the financial implications for families in County Durham. So I can just take you to paragraph eleven of the Corporate Overview and Security Management Board minutes from July, where they refer to the Cabinet meeting in June and it states, paragraph eleven, and I quote, "Cabinet agreed a charge to the standard and maintained constituency scheme of two pounds to align to the Bus Service Improvement Plan offer for twenty-three twenty-four academic year." So it would appear that two pounds is indeed the figure that is going to be required of parents, but it's worse than that. Because the Bus Service Improvement Plan, figure of two pounds, only exists until the thirty-first of October of this year. Then it increases by twenty-five percent to two pound fifty. So parents and children are going to face a twenty-five percent increase for the next academic year. And then it's worse. Then after the two pound fifty fare come November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, it, I quote, "returns to commercial rates." So this is going to be a spiral in impact for families in the future as a result of this, as well as what's been a spiral in impact in this council's budget in the past. So I would encourage members to please refer this back to the Cabinet, even just for that clarity they refer to about the two-pound issue. But not just that, but for the spiral in impact that this is going to have on those affected moving forward over the next two years. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Fraser. With your indulgence, can I just ask that if you need to whisper to someone, can you do it very quietly? I personally find it particularly rude that when someone is speaking, other people are speaking. We need to hear this debate this morning. We need to make sure that everyone is heard and everyone who wishes to speak can be heard. Thank you.
councillor Phil Heviside?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Phil Heviside, representing the Lumley Division and Chair of the Safe and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee. The comprehensive report presented to Cabinet is a testament to the diligent efforts put forth over the course of eighteen months. The evidence gathered during this extensive period has allowed us to propose a significant change in policy that will positively impact children from low-income families or those with special educational needs. One of the key recommendations outlined in the report is a provision of free transport for eligible children, recognising that transportation costs can be a burden for families, especially those facing financial difficulties. This initiative aims to alleviate their financial strain by ensuring that children have access to transportation without any additional cost. We are not only promoting equal opportunities but also enabling them to fully participate in educational activities and opportunities. Moreover, it's crucial to emphasise that children with special educational needs will continue to receive free transport services. We firmly believe that every child deserves an equal chance at education and development, regardless of their individual circumstances. By maintaining this provision, we are reinforcing our commitment to inclusivity and supporting those who require us. The request from the Corporate Overview for council debate highlighted five areas, one of which being the proposal will adversely impact on those more disadvantaged areas of the county, especially rural areas where public transport services are already reduced and in some cases removed. I think we've already heard in the presentation today that there's only nine schools involved on the concessionary scheme and we heard at scrutiny that none of them are rural areas at the moment. However, it is important to consider the potential implications of providing free home-to-school transport solely based on distance criteria. While it may seem fair to prioritise children in rural areas due to their longer travel distances, this approach might overlook other factors...
One minute, councillor.
...that could impact a child's access to education. For instance, income should also be taken into account as families with lower incomes may struggle to afford transportation costs regardless of their location. By solely focusing on distance, we are excluding children from low-income families who live within the specified distance but still face financial barriers. Additionally, there might be cases where children living in urban areas face significant challenge in accessing education due to factors such as traffic congestion or lack of safe walking routes. Ignoring these circumstances and only considering rural areas for free transport could lead to inequality and hinder equal opportunities for all children. Therefore, it would be more than equitable to develop a comprehensive eligibility criteria that takes into account both distance and income levels. Chair, I don't think there's any need for this report to be sent back to Cabinet and ask all members to vote against this motion to return the report to Cabinet.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Anne Reid?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everyone. I'm County Councillor Anne Reid and I represent the Crook Division. And I'm also Chair of the Children and Young People's Overview and Scrutiny Committee. The home-to-school transport consultation ran from the twenty-seventh of February, twenty twenty-three to the ninth of April, twenty twenty-three. Prior to the home-to-school transport being called in, there were three opportunities for all members of this council to raise concerns about the proposals. The first being the eighth of February, twenty twenty-three, prior to launching the consultation. The second, on the tenth of March, twenty twenty-three, at the Children and Young People's Overview and Scrutiny Committee, where members of all political persuasions were in attendance and where a formal written response was provided for the service. And thirdly, on the fourteenth of June, twenty twenty-three, for the Cabinet's final report. At that time, no questions were raised or submitted. Following the consultation feedback, the council's recommendation was for a charge of two pounds eighty a day. But after reviewing the consultation, it was decided to limit the increase to two pounds, which equates to a thirty-seven pence increase. This will mean there will be a loss of over two hundred thousand pounds, which is to be funded by this council. Without this thirty-seven pence uplift from one pound sixty-three to two pounds for these spare seats on home-to-school transport, this would mean that the council would need to increase the annual budget whereby households across the county would have to absorb this increase, whether or not their children or young people use that transport. So finally, I just want to emphasise the fact that...
One minute, councillor.
All children eligible to receive free transport due to family income or their special educational needs will continue to be provided with free transport. I'll not be voting for the motion and I would urge others to do the same. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Julie Skirfield?
Thank you. As probably the newest member of council, I haven't had many of the opportunities that have been spoken about today to comment on this. I've read and heard the point many times in relation to this issue that we do more than we statutorily need to. For me, the fact that to date we have gone the extra mile to support children and young people to get to school where this is necessary, one of the most critical aspects of their lives that will impact far into their futures and ours, I have to say, is something to be proud of and a position we should protect. Whilst appreciating the need to make savings, this particular saving comes at a disastrous time for families genuinely struggling to make ends meet. I've just this morning been in a breakfast meeting to consider the impact of food poverty on children and families. There is a recognition that many, many children in Durham are living with food insecurity day by day. That is another basic entitlement for children and families. That is uncertainty about a basic, another basic necessity. This decision will impact further. It is a choice being made by the Cabinet and I support this motion and would request Cabinet to reconsider.
councillor Maura McKeon?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the authoritative and fair way that you've chaired the meeting so far. We don't take many votes in this chamber that will directly impact on the wallets of families in County Durham, but this is one of the few times when we will. This is particularly important to rural communities because in communities like the ones that I represent, we don't have our own secondary school and so our children always have to go out of the area. Our buses are shrinking in terms of their service. It feels by the month. There are very few direct buses to any of the schools that our young people attend and so therefore the home-to-school transport is an incredibly important lifeline for our young people. Going above and beyond the statutory requirement has been a necessary adaptation for a county like Durham, a big rural one. And we've talked about people who are right at the very bottom of the income scale. Well, with the mortgage crisis, with the way that inflation is hitting ordinary working people, the idea of a family in crisis looks very different to, I think, the way it looks to some of the people on the other side of the chamber. People who have mortgages and are coming out of their fixed-rate mortgage terms will be paying hundreds of pounds more a month. And now we're adding to this on top of it. Thirty-seven pence a day might not sound much, but when it adds up with the mortgage and the bills and the food, it just becomes unmanageable for a lot of communities and that has a knock-on impact on the economy. So I do hope that people will think very carefully about the residents that they're going to meet. I know that a lot of us have community projects around food that we do and when we do that, we're going to meet people who are directly impacted by it. And I hope that people can make this vote and then look those people in the eye and defend this decision. And I also want to come back on the S N D support. I think a lot of the families with S N D children know how difficult it is to access that support anyway. We wouldn't be putting young people in these taxis if it wasn't necessary.
One minute, councillor.
And I don't think that it's up to people in this room to say what individual young people with S E N D need. It's, I thought we would be on this as a society, let alone as a county, with such a proud record on helping young people with additional needs. And again, just when, today we're just asking for it to be looked at again, I don't think it's really that contentious and really it should be looked at again. And we'll all be watching carefully and the people at home will be watching carefully to see what we do in this chamber today.
councillor David Sutton Lloyd?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor David Sutton Lloyd, representing the Acreliff North and Midrige Division. Given that councillor Cockran was one of the ten signatories to the call-in, he's now left the chamber because his company has a contract with DCC of over two hundred and fifty thousand a year for home-to-school transport. The question must be asked, is this call-in valid? Is it a use of, a justifiable use of council time or just another attempt to politically posture? I will not be voting. I'll be voting against.
Chair, just to clarify, the call-in was valid.
councillor Chris Hood? councillor Amanda Hopgood?
Thanks, Chair. I'm a bit astounded by what I've heard and the amnesia that seems to appear when you move from this side of the chamber to that side of the chamber, and also the inability to read a report, because it is quite clear within this report that there is no change to SND provision, that anyone eligible for SND provision of free home-to-school transport will continue to get that. It is also quite clear that any changes, so the hubs that were mentioned, is in consultation with the school, the parent, and only proceeds as and when. All of those agree that it is an opportunity for the child for development. There is nothing going to be implemented against the wish of a parent who doesn't want their child to attend a hub to be picked up. And we've just heard about rural, after we've had it confirmed by the officer, who I hope you believe that it doesn't affect rural areas. I'm just staggered that we're allowed to sit here and debate with utter misinformation from the other side, and almost blatant lies, which we have heard around the £2 fare. There can be a misinterpretation about it going, about it being £2, but not £2 each way, each day. That is just an outright misinformation given to the public, trying to scaremonger and trying to worry people unnecessarily.
Councillor Andrew Jackson.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Andrew Jackson, representing Bishop Auckland's division. The programme of work set out in Cabinet report tries to achieve three things. One of them is to enable children and young people with SND to develop their independence. The focus of proposals concerning children with SND lies in addressing their specific needs regardless of their geographical area. Moreover, should they be located at a designated pick-up point, the feasibility of this arrangement will be thoroughly examined in consultation with parents and schools. Many of the independent themes are optional, e.g. travel budgets, travel training, and will only be used with parental or child consent. The council is not moving away from single-person travel where it is required. However, travelling by taxi is not an entitlement and is a need-based decision. We need to ensure that the transport identified for each child meets their needs. A joint effort between parents, schools, and the review will concentrate on fostering independence. These type of initiatives have proven successful in assisting children with their independence, confidence, and socialisation, as many councils already operate them. Children's long-term development may suffer due to the potential for harmful dependence without our existing framework. Young individuals consistently stress the importance of enabling their independence whilst also ensuring their needs are met. These proposals will do that. I do not believe that this needs to be referred back to Cabinet, as the report does exactly what it set out to do, and this is putting children first whilst addressing unsustainable costs which will have to be met by the taxpayers of County Durham. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Mark Wilkes.
Thank you, Chair. I thought it pertinent to comment on the actual cost of home-to-school transport to all residents in this county. If we don't fix it, it's going to be costing over 10% of the entire council tax raised in this county. And we have, what, 500 different services we have to offer? Public needs to be aware of that. There's quite a lot of councillors in here complaining about process, yet how many of them actually submitted comments during the consultation? Now, officers could be, have missed someone, but I'm told that not a single Labour councillor actually responded to the consultation. I'm told, well, I know that not a single councillor turned up and asked a single question at Cabinet. So did this all just become important to you afterwards when you thought, what can we call in this month? Finally, Chair, I respect you as one of the best chairs this council has ever had, but I disagree slightly with you on something. An email sent during the meeting, which I've just looked at, was basically a picture, a video, and I just want to say it was directly related to the call-in.
Councillor Wilkes.
Because what it said was that, what it says, Chair, is that a member said a bare-faced lie...
Councillor Wilkes. We're discussing this, you and I will have that debate later. Sorry, can we move on to councillor Jonathan Elmer?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Jonathan Elmer from the Brandon division. I hope you can hear me. I think everybody across this chamber would agree...
Be councillor Elmer. If, Andrew.
My apologies. Thanks, I hope you can hear me now. I think everybody across this chamber would agree that the service has to be financially sustainable, and at the moment it's not, and we can't afford it. Now, it's easy, but by not accepting that and by saying we should carry on regardless is essentially the same as saying we don't care about balancing the books. Now, those councils that take that approach soon find themselves with a government taking over their administration, which would, if that would happen to us, would put us in even less control of decision-making. So it is important that we balance the books. I think it's also fair to say that everybody across this chamber appreciates the vital importance of the service, but sometimes difficult decisions have to be made. So the question here is, has the service thoroughly reviewed all options with a goal of finding a pathway that minimises impact? Has the service very carefully engaged with all stakeholders and invited people to participate in consultation? It has done all of that. So I think it's fair to say that the recommendations provided in the report that went to Cabinet are the optimised method of bringing the service back into balancing its budget whilst minimising the impact it will have on service provision. It's a really difficult decision, but by referring it back to Cabinet, all we're doing is delaying the taking of a difficult decision. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Pete Malloy, Spennymoor division. I've listened intensely to both sides of the debate this morning, but as a responsible council, we have to look internally where it comes to funding, and I believe we've done this in regard to looking at sharing transport, and we've seen what the costs have been, and, you know, we know, we can expect what they're going to be, and it's unfair to treat the County Durham taxpayer as a walking cash machine and expect them to foot the bill all the time. We've got to be responsible, and if we can put children together, share in transport, then that's a common sense approach. But also, in my division that I represent, we have the Oaks School, and on the next block, we have Middlestamore Primary School, and next to Middlestamore Primary School, we have the Rainbow Nursery. So Middlestamore and the Oaks let out at the same time, give or take five or 10 minutes. And I have had many residents come to me with traffic concerns on Rock Road, which is the road that they're on, and I've even raised the issue with councillor Henderson in the past a couple of times. We've had wardens out to have a look, and basically, at the letting-out time, quarter past three, I have seen queues of taxis starting to form up an hour and a half before and causing traffic issues, which is unfair for the local residents that live by these schools. And notice, this hasn't been addressed, their concerns are part of this.
One minute, councillor.
Thank you. So if this method of sorting out the home-to-school issue can also sort out some of the traffic congestion on our roads, then I welcome it, and I will not be supporting this. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Richard Bell.
Thank you, Chair. We've heard councillor Elmer bring some reasoned argument to the debate, and councillor Malloy bring some sound Spennymoor of common sense to it as well. I just want to refer members to actually what we're arguing about, which is at page 178, paragraph 11, the actual cupboard decisions, in inverted commas. Agree in principle to phase out maintained concessory schemes subject to further appraisals. Agree to undertake a review of individual children in receipt of single-person transport. Agree review. Agree to undertake a trial of pick-up points. Agree to review those routes which are currently assessed as unsafe, et cetera. There's more reviews in that report than you can shake a stick at, and a further report will be coming to Cabinet in due course. The £0.37 a mile, just for clarity and stating the umpteenth time, £0.37 increase in fare for first of 452 pupils at nine schools, none of which are rural, 452 out of a population of 70,000. So explain to those 69,500-something children and parents who are subsidising the rest why they shouldn't get the same treatment. I'd also say, look at the money we're spending, and you'd expect them to say this is Mr Finance. Budget increasing to £29.1 million next year, up from £14.4 million in 1920. This budget frankly is out of control. We're putting another, this £7.98 million into the budget next year, that equates to 3.9% on the council tax. 3.9%, which jolly well will affect everybody in the county. Not 452 out of 70,000, it'll affect 70,000 out of 70,000 and hundreds of thousands of more. So please don't lecture me about who's looking after residents of the County Durham in terms of cost of living. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Councillor Jake Miller.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And in terms of clarity, I'm the one in that fore door, and for all, I wish it was a better fore door, because it's not a very good one. I don't appreciate it being sent round. I thank colleagues behind us for raising...
Councillor Miller, point of order has been dealt with. Can we move on to what you...
Yep. And I've got broad shoulders and I can take it. We've heard from the young people behind us how it'll affect them on unsafe routes. We're all hearing about the cuts that have been made on public service buses, and just because a school isn't in a rural area doesn't mean that the child going to school isn't. We don't know where any of these children are coming from or where they live, and rural areas have been impacted more than urban areas in terms of public services. We've heard about the added pressure that this will have on families. Yes, I agree that we've got to be financially sustainable as a council, but so do the families that haven't paid this increase and everything else that are going on. So we've heard from the people who it'll impact, and a correction to councillor Wilkes, a member of this side did submit a response as part of the consultation. So if you're not interested in listening to how it'll affect the young people and everybody else in the county, vote the motion down, but if you are interested in what our residents are saying and concerned about the impact this will have on families, vote for the motion, because I will be.
Councillor Danny Woods.
Thank you, Chair. Just before I start, I'd just like to make a comment really on the comments that we heard from the leader of the council about amnesia between different sides of the chamber. I'm certainly under no doubt that councillor Hopgood will actually be proven right one day, and I'm sure she'll be quite keen to forget some of the things that have happened over the past couple of years when she does return to this side of the chamber at some point. The main point of me registering to speak, though, Chair, was to request a named vote, please.
It's a valid request. The way in which members vote will be recorded in the minutes.
Councillor Angela Thirties.
Thank you, Chair. I've got just a simple question to ask us. When Cabinet looked at this report, did you look at it as an individual item, or did you actually horizon scan and see what other increases that parents with children had encountered over this year and potentially coming forward? Just to point out that parents who have children on school meals will have actually encountered a £17 increase per child per meal by September this year, and also there is another increase that is due in April 2024. Now, this is a contract that has been given out by Durham County Council to allow that those dinner providers to do that, and that is because of unprecedented period of financial challenge across the range of industrial sectors. Now, I kind of get that, but what that's been allowed to happen there is, is we're putting more pressure on the purses of the people with children. We are going to see increases in nursery costs and childcare costs as well. I know this as a governor of a nursery, we will be seeing increased costs because we might have to make that decision to sustain, and because we're a maintained school, I can't make that decision, I have to ask for permission. So at this moment in time, that is something else, that is potentially coming. So for me, I will be supporting this motion, and I'll be supporting this motion quite simply because we have got 522,100 residents out there, and I bet, I dare bet that of them 522,100 people, I bet at least half of them would give £0.37 to get the burns to school, because I certainly would. I would give two families £0.37 to get the burns to school, because the burns need to get to school, and sometimes...
One minute, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. The only time a child gets a hot meal in our county in some areas is when they're at school, which they're also getting incurred costs with. So for me, Cabinet, just please, just take it back and have a look, but have a look at the other stuff that is being put onto the families of children, because you've got school dinners, now you've got transport, and there's also potential childcare costs. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Carl Marshall.
Thanks, Chair. I promise I'll be, I'll be brief. There's a couple of points I wanted to make, because it's been, it's been quite a healthy debate this morning, but I just want to make the point that it's okay for us to disagree, it's okay for us to have a different opinion, that's fine. We don't need to throw mud at each other, we don't need to sort of fall back on trying to invent processes that have been followed through the constitution, that were confirmed by legal. This is all part of democracy, it's all part of holding each other to account, and I think for, for me, I don't agree with the political choice that's been made by the council. So effectively, as a member who's not part of the Cabinet, I've pursued a way of having a wider debate on the choice that's been made by the Cabinet, and I think that's perfectly acceptable, and we shouldn't be scared of that. We should be able to debate things amicably. Chair, the only other thing I wanted to point out before I shut up was that, you know, choices nationally are what's leading us to this today. You know, this is a Tory government that's cut this council's budget significantly since 2010, since they came in, enabled by the Lib Dems at the beginning. Chair, that is the reason why we're cutting services, that's the reason why we have massive pressures on children's services, per se, adult social care. The funding model for this council in particular is broken, and it's been broken by the Tories and everybody that has enabled them over the years, and that's why we're sitting talking about cut after cut after cut, and the impact that that has on our communities. And if anyone wants to see the impact, come and spend a day with me in Stanley, and I'll take you around to meet the families who have been directly affected by what this Tory government have done. Chair, for me, there's only one thing that's unsustainable, and that's the Conservative Party, not this, not the home-to-school transport.
Councillor Susan Macdonald.
Thank you, Chair. One thing that hasn't been addressed here today is the fact that there's been an enormous amount of work put in by our offices on procurement and the home-to-school transport team. Hours, hours... Hours, hours, I would suggest weeks and weeks of work. Every opportunity has been afforded to every single member of this council to put into the decisions that were made in that report. No one, no one has objected to anything, and yet here today we're politically band standing again, talking about something that could have been sorted out weeks and weeks and weeks ago. One thing I'd like to say, though, is, in procurement terms, this is a massive, massive contract. On the 1st of September, we need to let 70% of our home-to-school transport contracts, that's six weeks away. Now, there are taxi drivers who will be relying on those contracts, because that's their income, that's their livelihood. They are council taxpayers in County Durham as well. So please, I agree, we can all disagree, but don't forget there are people on the end of this whose livelihoods depend on being awarded those contracts, and in procurement terms, six weeks is a millisecond. Thank you.[998.44][998.44](applause)
Thank you, Councillor Macdonald. Councillor Richard O'Meara.
Chair, sorry, I left the queue to speak.
Thank you, Councillor. There is nobody else registered to speak. I would like to invite Councillor Crute to give us his reply.
Thank you, Chairman. I think the case has been well put to refer this matter back to Cabinet for a decision. But before I come back to that at the end of this summary, I've got to refer to some alarming comments I've had this morning about the role of scrutiny, and specifically the calling process. The decision to call in was made by me in consultation with the section 151 officer and with the monitoring officer, and it was a valid referral. That puts that one to bed. There's other points I need to raise as well, though. Management Board, as Craig Martin's already suggested, has a duty to hold the Cabinet to account, and if necessary, make them feel uncomfortable. That's in line with the council's constitution. I'll also point out that the management board has a new composition since the last AGM, so that was a valid referral through the process. Composition of the scrutiny function, that this council is politically balanced and is politically neutral in its decision-making process. So if a member's opposite to imply a political motive in referring this matter to the council is both a clear misrepresentation of the facts or a deliberate misunderstanding of the council's procedural rules. However, even if their charges were true, and they're not, that must also apply to political choice. And what we have before us this morning is a political choice that reflects the priorities of the coalition, not the people we represent who are struggling day after day against a devastating cost of living crisis. That's not their making. £0.37 a day, sounds all right, that, doesn't it? But £0.07 per day per child, it equates to increased cost per month of over £7 a child. Two children, it's another £14, £15 a month, on top of the costs that you're facing, that are going up day by day. Along with the other decisions made by the Cabinet, in regard to this policy, this puts at risk access to education for our children, a point well put by many members on this side. If we choose to protect that right...
One minute, Councillor.
Thank you. We need to send this decision back to Cabinet to reconsider the decision that will have a profoundly negative impact on children and families across the county. Now, if Cabinet chose to stick with their decision, that's their right, but at least now they can do it in the light of open democratic debate and with a clear message from this side to consider the true and devastating impact of their actions on struggling families across the county. I move, Chair, that this is referred back to the Cabinet for reconsideration for the purposes we've outlined on this side of the chamber this morning. Thanks, Chair.[1188.83][1188.83](applause)
We will move to the vote count. Helen will just remind us of the...
Thank you, Chair. So when you hear the beep, the vote will open, and then if you're voting in favour to refer this back to Cabinet, press one. Against is two. Three to abstain. If you press the wrong button, pressing the right button will correct it. And we have had a request for a named vote, so the way in which you vote will be recorded in the minutes.
The vote is now closed.[1534.33][1534.33](pause) For the motion 52, against the motion 53, abstentions non. The motion falls, the matter will not be referred back to Cabinet.[1567.15][1567.15](applause) We move on to item 15, and can I thank Councillor Thirties for the opportunity to refer this to the next council meeting? Thank you so much.[1590.30][1590.30](pause) We move on to item 16. Questions from members. Councillor O'Meara, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. LNER are currently proposing to remove staffing at Durham Rail Station. Apparently this is part of their proposals to create a modern station retailing experience. Yes, they actually said that. So my question is to the leader of the council, and it is, will the leader of the council join me in expressing deep concern...[1644.88][1644.88](phone ringing) Are we voting on this?[1650.83][1650.83](laughing) Will the leader of the council join me in expressing deep concern and opposition to LNER's plans to close the ticket office at Durham Rail Station?
Yes.
Thank you, Councillor O'Meara, for the question. The simple answer is yes. The longer answer is that each Cabinet member have written with particular regard to their portfolio, whether it be the effect on children and young travellers, people with special educational needs, people with disabilities.[1689.61][1689.61](laughing) Can I carry on, Chair? Or do I have to wait for...
Council, we have all had a very difficult meeting, and I have reiterated this before now, when a member is speaking, it's particularly rude to have another conversation. Please carry on, Amanda.
Thank you, Chair. So each Cabinet member has written about the impact it would have on different people within society and the disadvantage it will cause to so many travellers. So yes, wholeheartedly support the opposition to closing ticket offices, not just in Durham but across the country, and the negative impact it will have. I'm happy to provide you with the copies of the letters, Councillor O'Meara.
Thank you, Councillor Hopgood. That concludes today's business for the council meeting. Council members. I'd like to thank everyone for taking part today, and to those members of the public and the media who have been watching the meeting, can I say a special thank you again to our young people? Please forgive our follies that we sometimes do.